Calling the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the December 4th, 2018, Post Falls City Council Meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present. I would like to welcome, in the back, we have three students from Post Falls High School who were here attending the council meeting as a requirement for a government class they're taking at North Idaho College, so, welcome. I told them it's probably going to be a fairly short meeting, but...
They picked a good one.
They may have picked a good one, yeah. And then also, in the front row, I'd like to mention that we have Day Fair's twin brother here today. So... Tonight, we have a few announcements. Black Bay Master Plan, there will be a community-wide meeting on Friday, December 7th, at City Hall from 2:00 until 6:00 PM, just prior to the Winterfest activities. Come out and meet the consultants and share what you love about Black Bay Park, what we should protect and how the space should be... should take shape to better serve our community. Winterfest is Friday at... from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM on the City Hall Plaza. Come for the annual tree lighting, caroling, outdoor campfires, and roasting marshmallows, treats and crafts, and a visit with Santa in his workshop, and I believe Mr. Wolf is going to be our representative, our Santa-in-waiting that night. The Post Falls Chambers Tiny Tree Festival is Saturday, December 8th, at 10:00 AM. Each tiny tree is decorated by local community leaders, nonprofits, and businesses, and will be available for purchase through our silent auction. Tickets are available on the Chambers website. The city employees are holding a food drive for the Post Falls Food Bank. Help the Grinch's heart grow two sizes a share by donating. You can drop your donations off in the rotunda at City Hall or to the media center. And just so you know, there's a little bit of self-serving on that, because this is a contest, and our good friends in the media center, if you donate to the media center, then they get to take credit, so that's a job well done. Kudos. President Donald Trump ordered the American flags be flown at half-staff for 30 days to honor the memory of President George H.W. Bush, the 41st President of the United States. Wednesday is the National Day of Mourning to honor President Bush. On Wednesday, all U.S. Postal Service post offices will be closed. Regular mail will not be delivered, and package delivery will be limited. And we have an introduction, so I would like to have our friend Patty Shea from Avista come up to introduce her friend with the great haircut.
Mayor Jacobson, councilors. I came to do two things. One, I want to introduce Todd to you. He's going to be my successor starting January 1st, after I retire, and then I want to thank you too. So I'll introduce Todd first. So Todd Kisby is my counterpart, actually, in the Spokane Valley, Liberty Lake, the West Plains area, so he's been doing the same job I do over on the other side. He lives here, though, he's been born, raised here, so he's a local boy. He and I worked together for about six years on the operations side of the house, and when I started working with him in our dispatch center, I realized he'd be a great one as I came into this job to follow behind me. So I've been working on this succession plan for about four years. So I hope you'll enjoy working with him as much as I have, so I just wanted to introduce Todd.
Fuck him, Todd.
And then I just wanted to thank you guys very much. I can remember, I came about 11 years ago and introduced myself at a meeting, and I don't think you guys knew what you were getting into at that point in time, so some of you are still here, thank God. So, anyway, but I just want to thank you for all that you've done with Avista. You always listen to us, no matter what our issues are or what concerns we have. You are always very fair with us. Your great dialogue goes back and forth, and you treat us with such respect. And I just want to thank you guys for that relationship. It means a lot to me. I have very high standards, and I wanted someone to come in behind me that will hold those up with what you guys have done for the community. So thank you for the time that each one of you take to be in this role, and for the staff, they're all just excellent, so thank you very much.
We thank you. You've been a great, great resource for us. I've enjoyed personally having you involved in the council meetings at Jobs Plus. You've done a great job there, always positive, and it's amazing that you're retiring at age 34, so we just wish you the best, and thank you for all you've done. And Todd, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Also, tonight, I would like to request the reappointment of Jerry Balzell and Lynn Crosby to the Urban Renewal Agency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And also, we have a... I'm requesting the confirmation of the appointment of Eric Clemenson to the Urban Renewal Agency, and just for your information, Rich Hauser has served in that position, and since he has been elected now, he's an elected official, he felt it was probably better if he did not serve on the Urban Renewal Commission, so, agency. So with that, I would ask for the appointment of Eric Clemenson to fill his spot on Urban Renewal.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And Eric, Eric's here. Thank you, Eric, we appreciate it. Are there any amendments to the agenda? There is one tonight.
Yes, we have one tonight. We need to remove, under consent calendar, item E, Hall &amp; Acres subdivision plat application, and that application will come back to the next agenda.
Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes. Are there any declarations of conflict tonight? Seeing none, would you present the consent calendar, please?
Item A is minutes from the November 20th, 2018, City Council meeting. Item B is payables, November 13th through November 26th, 2018. Item C is contract with Stratton Land Services for survey work along the west end of Corbin Ditch. Item D is point at Post Falls, second edition, Expo Parkway, Beck Road to Woodbridge South, subdivision plat application. Item F is Peregrine Place, formerly known as Pioneer Acres, subdivision plat application. Item G is grant of right-of-way for Jaclyn Road. And item H is contract amendment with TO engineers for survey work at Spokane and Prairie. And item I is contract with Fred's Plumbing for plumbing labor and materials for Crown Point Park.
Any questions on the consent?
I had a question on item H. Seemed like... I was curious why this annexation was part of the hydro-geological survey.
Good question. John Beecham, Public Works Director. It's very similar work to a portion of the work that TO is doing as part of that contract, so since we had previously negotiated that work with them on a different property, made sense to have them do this property as well. Also surveying the first property for the purpose of annexation, so it's really the same work in two different locations. Since we had already selected them for that work, that seemed like a logical way to move forward.
So it's just the fact that they're doing the same work? Because this property doesn't have anything to do with that survey, does it?
That is correct. The two projects are completely separate and funded separately.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Tonight, we have no public hearings, no unfinished business. Next item on the agenda is citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding city-related issues that are not on the agenda. And if you wish to speak to the council, come forward, please, give your name, and we'll allow you five minutes to talk.
Hello, thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Autumn Olberding, and I have been a resident of Post Falls for 11 years. I'm here today to address my concerns of our children getting to and from school safely. I have a second grader at Prairie View Elementary, and I walk him to school two days a week. On our route to school, we cross the Greens Ferry and Horse Haven intersection. As you know, traffic on Greens Ferry has dramatically increased in the last few years with the new overpass. This overpass is great for our driving community, but has significantly created more risk for pedestrians and students. Greens Ferry has a 35 mile per hour speed limit with a 20 mile per hour school zone. Unfortunately, drivers are not only going over the speed limit on this road, but they are also not identifying the crosswalk. When heading north on Greens Ferry, there is a sign that states "School 20 miles per hour when flashing," and it is before the Greens Ferry and Horse Haven crosswalk. The flashing 20 mile per hour sign is after the crosswalk. In the past two years, I've observed drivers not slowing to 20 miles per hour until they have reached the flashing light. In addition to this speed problem, drivers are not stopping for pedestrians trying to cross. This may be due to visibility issues of where the sidewalk meets the road, but whatever the reason, this is creating a dangerous situation for anyone trying to cross. I addressed my concerns last year with the Prairie View principal, Janelle Baker, and requested a crossing guard at that intersection. She responded quickly to my concerns and implemented a crossing guard before and after school. While this has helped tremendously, it has not solved the problem. In fact, this year, a crossing guard was almost hit while standing in the crosswalk with her stop sign. I've spoken to the Post Falls Police Department twice about my concerns, and they're doing the best they can to do to patrol around our schools, but as you know, we have several schools and limited resources. As our neighborhood and community continue to grow, this problem will also grow. Because of this, I feel that something else should be done at this specific intersection. Maybe flashing lights or flags at the crosswalk to help drivers see the crosswalk, or adding a flashing light at the first school crossing sign. I'm hopeful that there's something that we can do to increase the safety of this dangerous crosswalk. Thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns. I know you care deeply about the safety of our children, and I believe that with your help, we can implement safe routes to school for our community. Our future generations are so important, and by working together, we can keep them safe and continue to make Post Falls a place they're proud to call home.
Thank you very much for bringing your concerns forward. Not always easy to get up and address people. You did well. I thought you identified the problems very well. We've had issues... Over the last month, we've had discussions on... in school zones, other school zones, and people speeding. Unfortunately, with flashing lights, it doesn't always slow the people down, but I would ask chief and our street folks to... engineers to take a look, and do we have your contact information?
Yeah, I gave it to the clerk.
Okay. So I would ask that as we go through, that we respond and let you know what's going on, and if you don't see an improvement, please bring it back to us.
Great, thank you so much. It's, yeah, scary for my children, and also, just being right there, we walk our dog across the street, and we'll have a family of four of us with our dog, and people aren't stopping with our hands up, so it's just really dangerous, and I hate to see something terrible happen, so...
Well, again, thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
And I'd ask that when that's evaluated, if you bring it back to council for an update. So, okay. Chief?
I haven't announced, not so much an issue.
Perfect.
Dan Ryan Cooney County Fire and Rescue, mayor and council, just wanted to pass on that this Thursday evening, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, we are going to be escorting Santa Claus through parts of town again this year, so we're going to be making noise, flashing lights, people hopefully will see us. Come out, see Santa Claus, get a candy cane, we'll be doing a food drive and/or monetary donations for the Christmas for All program, and this year, the police department is assisting us with some of the volunteer labor that we need.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you, we appreciate you doing that, and I know it's always fun. I can tell when you're coming through, I can hear the kids and the dogs, so it's Christmas time. Anyone else? Seeing none, we're down to new business, and tonight's item is contract with JUB Engineers for engineering design services for well projects. Mr. Urbini?
Andrew Urbini, Utilities Project Manager. While I wait for this to load, even though I'm the only city presenter this evening, I promise to keep my presentation short. My presentation this evening is for a design and construction oversight contract with JUB Engineers. This is for three well projects for our water system within the city. I've put together a couple slides, and because there are three projects, there's a couple different components to it, and so I've done my best to try and explain that, and I'll walk through the location and how we identified these projects. So you could see the two locations. In the main zone, we have projects one and two. It would be a new well and wellhouse, and then rehabilitating the existing well, three. In the west zone, we have a new well located at the existing well nine site. That's just off of Beck Road, where the water tower is located at. Some background for these projects. Murray Smith developed the 2018 Water System Master Plan, and that was completed this summer. City Council approved and adopted that master plan. Within that plan, there is a five-year improvement schedule. All three of these well projects are included in that five-year timeline. In discussions with JUB and the city, we realized and identified that these three projects, because they are all related, that it makes the most sense for efficiency and cost savings to include all of these projects at the same time. General, this will be a two-year timeline, 2019 to 2020, and I'll get into some of the project scheduling. The other item of note here is that the... these projects will be funded through the Water System Capital Improvements Fund, which has been budgeted for the 2019 and 2020. So, some additional details on the projects. So Project One, as I mentioned, it's a new well and wellhouse located in the main zone, and this addresses additional capacity. Currently, we are close to capacity within our system, so adding this well greatly improves the main zone. Second project is the rehabilitation of the existing well three site, that's located off of Idaho Street. This facility was constructed in the 1960s, and is actually the oldest well facility the city owns and operates currently. So by upgrading this well facility, it will upgrade the wellhouse and the equipment inside. Currently, the pumping equipment actually pumps about half of the design point, so by upgrading that equipment and building a facility that allows for serviceability and maintenance of the equipment inside will greatly improve operations. The third project is a new well, and this will be a well-only located in the west zone. So as I mentioned, this is the well nine site. Currently, there is a well and water storage tower there. This will be a new well constructed next to it. At this time, we would drill the well by utilizing the same well driller that would be on-site drilling the new well in the main zone. Again, I know this gets somewhat confusing, so if there are any questions at the end, I'll be able to answer those. So, for our schedule, because of the different projects and the timeline, and with a well project, it's unique in that you drill the well and construct the well, and then come back and place the house. So generally, it's a two-year timeline, construction schedule. I provided a high-level view and tried to highlight the key milestones of the project. Following an approval of a contract this evening with JUB, they would start design with a goal of bidding the new well construction by May of 2019. Moving beyond May of 2019 to August, we would work on the design of the wellhouse, the new wellhouse and the wellhouse three, and then that would go out to bid in August of 2019. So the well drilling would be completed by end of 2019, with the wellhouse construction completed the following year by 2020, which completes all three projects. This brings me to my final slide, and the financial component of this project. So the design and construction agreement that I'm presenting tonight with JUB is for $572,300. We've included a 10% contingency that includes unforeseen... that would be for unforeseen conditions or improvements to the benefit of the water system, and this would be authorized by the Public Works Director, if needed. That brings the total requested amount this evening to $629,530. My final number, I've noted in the bottom of the slide here, is the project estimate. The total amount, which includes the design of the number above, is $5,096,000. So again, this includes the design and construction. One additional item of note is that number also includes the eventual build-out of the west zone well. So currently, we would only drill the well, but that cost also includes what it would take to build the wellhouse in the future. There just was not a clean way to break that cost out. So that cost is representative of the final build-out of all three projects. If there are any questions, say...
This is John.
Andrew, you indicated that this...
I apologize. I think I called him John.
Yeah, that's okay. You got me right. You indicated that the purpose of this whole project is to improve capacity. When this is all done, what will that do to our capacity? How far forward will it take us? Or how many more gallons? What's it going to do to the capacity?
It increases the capacity, the actual quantity. I would... I don't have that actual number. John?
2,000 gallons per well, roughly.
Yeah, so the per-well production rate is 2,000 gallons a minute. So if you take the two new wells, that would add 4,000 gallons a minute. The rehab of the existing well currently produces about 1,000 gallons a minute, so improving that would bring it to 2,000. As far as improvements and timeline, I don't know that that's... that I have an actual...
That's okay.
...timeframe of how far out that carries us.
I was just kind of curious, you know, after we do these improvements, are we looking to have to do it again in two years, five years, 10 years? Whatever.
Right.
John looks like he's got some more...
John Beecham.
I was anticipating he was going to do that.
Thanks for the question, John Beecham, Public Works Director. Again, these are the well projects within our five-year plan, and this would... I mean, you can... We've got eight existing wells now, this would add two more, so that's another 25% capacity. And then, from there on out, it's really dependent on how many additional users connect to the system. So that can be one really big industrial user that can use 2,000 gallons per minute, or several subdivisions, or... Just depends on the growth within the boundaries of the water system.
Okay.
Based on our projections, there are two additional wells in the 10-year timeframe, but that included some major industrial growth on the northwest side of town.
Great.
So the only question I have is, the one well would be drilled now, but you would complete the wellhouse and the pumping station later, or that's... Is there a timeline on that, or...
You mean the one on the west side?
Yeah, on the west side one.
Correct. On the west... In the west zone, it would be the drill... We would drill the well only, and then in the main zone, we would drill the well and construct a wellhouse.
Okay. What's the reason for the delay in the wellhouse?
At this point, the well in the west zone is not critical, but there is a cost savings to the city by including that, the drilling of that well with the well of the main zone. For instance, mobilization costs for the well driller. Probably, within the next three years, so in the five-year timeframe, that west zone well will need to be in production. I foresee that happening within the two-, three-year timeframe, building the wellhouse for that west zone well.
So you would just drill it now, then cap it, and then...
Correct.
Later date, then you said, okay.
Correct. And then make provisions for the construction of the wellhouse down the road.
At a later date, okay. Any other questions? Thank you. And Andrew, I apologize for calling you John.
It's okay.
I got your last name right. And we do need an action on this. We need a motion?
I'd move to approve the contract for JUB Engineering's for engineering design services for the well projects.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thank you both for the information. We have two resolutions tonight. First is the City Center Parking Plan Addendum.
Move to approve the resolution, City Center Parking Plan Addendum, November 2018.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And second resolutions, drafting and digital submittal standards.
Move to approve the resolution, drafting and digital submittal standards.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Any administrative staff reports tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Mayor comments, I do have one, but Lynda, did you want to talk about the Eagle Project? Were you going to mention that tonight?
Sure.
Please, I'll let you do that now.
Okay. First of all, we're getting very close to our goal, but I would like to send a special thanks out to Cliff Mort, Mort Construction, and the team at Monogram Homes for a very generous donation that we received today, and I'd just like to thank that company because they always do step up and help us. Again, we're getting very close with the Eagle Project, and everyone who has donated that's been very kind. I think it's going to turn out very well. Right now, Justin is working with JUB Engineering's on how that's going to be set in the planter on the south side, over by First Avenue and Spokane Street. So as soon as the engineers and Justin and JUB get finished with that, hopefully, we'll have an eagle soon. Right, Shelley?
Yes.
Probably installation spring, you think?
I'm guessing with the weather and probably the timing, it'll probably be spring.
Good.
I'd really like to thank also Jason and Shelley for all their help with the accounting and keeping track of all these wonderful donations from everybody, so again, thank you guys, too.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for spearheading that, we appreciate it. Which leads me to my announcement, that we have somewhat of an ad hoc arts commission, and it was just... We brought a group of folks together to help mainly with the Eagle Project, but I would like to consider forming an actual arts commission. What I would like is anyone who has an interest, I'd love to get someone with business background involved, I would love to get people who are artists or involved in that, involved. And I would like to do is have anyone who's interested pick up a form from our... from Shannon, our clerk, and with the information, so we can get... gather names, and then we'll meet and discuss how we want to structure it. We've talked about possibly... Shelley's provided information on how the city court lane does, and Stephen, oh, you're very familiar with that, how the city of Liberty Lake handles theirs. One of the other questions is how do we fund it? So it's not, you know, something that has to come out of general funds, what can we do to help provide funding for arts in our community? We'll have at least... We'll have a council liaison on it, on the commission, and... So if you do have an interest, please contact Shannon or Deborah at City Hall, and we'll get that information and go from here. The only other thing I would say is, as the weather continues to get chillier and we can expect the white stuff, please drive safely, and I know even though it hasn't really snowed and stuck much, roads have been slick at times, and there are areas of sidewalk streets that are slick, so be careful. And to follow up on the comment that a nice young lady made earlier, watch out for children. I leave for work in the morning and it's dark, and there's students crossing intersections in the crosswalks under streetlights, and they're still very difficult to see, so just be attentive as you drive, please. No, let's not have any unnecessary tragedies occur. Council comments? Seeing none, we do need an executive session tonight.
We do.
For how long?
20 minutes?
Sure.
20 minutes.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061C to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency. Further, that no action will be taken, and the session will last approximately 20 minutes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We'll enter executive session.[1012.57]